Box sounds.
Oh, it's on.
Same thing.
I have less time than you thought. All right, so for those technical difficulties, we're unable to stream at this moment, but we will be recording and. All right, so June twenty four, twenty twenty five, six P M. Let's call us being in order. Would you please stand for pledge of allegiance? Hi, pledge allegiance.
Do the flag.
Of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the court please take the roll?
Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Crossman.
Here.
Councilmember Kangizer.
Here.
Councilmember Hess.
Here.
Councilmember Johnstone.
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky.
Here.
Here.
All right, moving on to agenda approval. You get approval, Councilmember Hess.
Move that we approve the agenda as provided.
Second.
If I can for wood, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Looking curious, moving on to special presentations, Councilmember Hess.
Uh, one of the things I noticed, and if we can get that corrected, is on the city website, the agenda is the old one prior to the addition of the special of the special presentation, if we can get that updated.
It's updated on the other link.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Moving on to special presentations, we have the Yom Senior Center here today. Genie, would you please stand at the podium and give your presentation?
Because I constantly forget what I have planned, I'm probably reading this all.
And Genie, for those that don't know, don't know you, would you please?
Uh, my name is Genie James, and I'm the volunteer executive director of the Yom Senior Center. Sorry. So I was asked to speak about how we spend your money and what the center means to our members. So I am. Uh, how we spend the money I can speak to, but what it means to the centers rather, the members rather than hearsay, I ask them to write to them. So the Yom Senior Center is grateful for the financial support we receive from the city of Yom. The center operates on membership dues, donations, and fundraisers. Without the support from our city, I don't believe we would remain open. As the center is run completely by volunteers, all funds received go towards monthly expenses, insurance, and maintenance costs. We moved to our current location in two thousand and five. Over time, things were out. We recently had to replace a ductless HVAC unit in our kitchen at a cost of fifty seven hundred dollars. This past week, our walk-in cooler refrigerator decided to quit. We will pay six thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars and eighteen cents this week for that repair. We have a large lot which is in constant need of upkeep. I often wonder what the planners had in mind when it was designed. Did they have the funds to pay then? Did they consider we are a senior facility and who would be taking care of it? We, in the last year, we've been able to purchase a riding lawnmower, weed eater blower, and battery operated mower. We're grateful for the Yom High School football team, Windermere, and other community members and organizations who have donated their time and resources to help with the yard work. Our equipment was used by them and will enable us to attempt to keep up the yard in between times. We want our center to look inviting to those who come and visit and join. I was asked to speak on how we help seniors in our community, rather than come here and say, this is what I hear. I ask our members to say what the senior center means to them in their own words. Sometimes it's too cold or rainy or hot, or you don't want to do anything like more gardening or house cleaning. So that is why I chose to come to the senior center. When I joined eight years ago, I learned how to play pinochle, and now I come every Tuesday and Thursday. I love it. I have met people that I now call friends. Sometimes I stay for the wonderful lunch, which is only five dollars. Then afterwards, stay to play cards. Lots of laughs there. And did you know that laughter is a healer? Thanks to the Yom businesses that have provided a free dinner for the seniors on a Monday. Thanks so much to the city of Yom for their support, and thanks to Genie James, who holds the center together, Renee D. The center has enriched my life greatly. Before I felt isolated, now I have many friends at the center for socialization. I go to the exercise class two days a week and line dancing two days. I enjoy both classes. The bingo and dinners are also great for socializing. Jan D. The center is a place of community. It creates well-being with art and exercise for important, vitalizing validation of seniors. Meals are stupendous with socializing for body, mind, and spirit. I am not a person who joins organizations very easily. After living in Yom almost a year, I decided I would check out the Yom Senior Center. I am sorry that I waited so long. I was accepted by everybody just like an old friend, and they made me feel welcome. There is something for everybody. They have lunches for five dollars and a free dinner and bingo once a month. There's yoga, chair yoga, several exercise groups, line dancing, bongo, pinochle, and a good library, to name a few. Genie is a director or manager or whatever her title is, and she is just on top of everything. She mops the floors, handles financials, welcomes everyone from the time we walk in the door. I can't say enough good things about the center. We are lucky to have this program as there are a lot of seniors in this community. Carol O. The center means fellowship and fun, love coming for the meals, and also bingo and dinner. We like Friday bingo and Tuesday talks. I feel the center goes above and beyond in meeting the social needs of seniors. Love our center. P S, Genie is great. W W. I was gonna leave all those out, but I really didn't feel I had the authority to edit when I asked for their opinion, so sorry, guys. The chance to meet new people, enjoy a number of classes that are offered in exercise and yoga, enjoy cards. How friendly everyone is to you. Classes are great. How helpful they are to you. Be new to the class, and it's wonderful how they treat you. They are good at getting information. Great socializing place with wonderful exercise classes, card games, socializing events. I love to come to dinner and bingo. I like the fellowship. Marilyn. The exercise class is amazing. Free dinners put on by community members and businesses. Very welcome for any new members and older ones as well. No pun on age. When I moved to Yom, I didn't know anyone. Coming to the center was a way to meet people and have activities to do. People, breakfast, lunch, dinner, bingo. The people and being able to socialize and have fun. Exercise classes are the best. Stephanie H. I love the senior center because it gives me a place to go exercise, dance, socialize, and meet people, to share positive experiences together. Linda S. Many seniors face old age alone. Yom Senior Center provides a place to enjoy company and stay healthy. It helps the community by providing a place for families to bring their loved seniors when they need to work and by keeping otherwise isolated seniors connected. It's a place you can go and meet people. You can play games and exercise. They have a library. You can take books out, or you can relax and read there. You can have lunch if you like. They have all kinds of craft supplies. And then there is Genie. Always meet you with a smile, and she might have a cute joke for you. Francis A. A place to come to support, socialize, playing games, getting a good hot meal, meeting new people and seeing old friends. A place to come and lots of have lots of fun. Our center is a good place to come and socialize. Have a great hot lunch for five dollars. We have fun playing games. They have exercise and paint classes, guest speakers. Socializing good people, good lunches. Tai Chi Tuesdays, my favorite daytime of the week. That's all. The senior center is a place to meet new friends, to enjoy healthy exercise, to interact with fun people, to enjoy good food, and to have a lot of great times. Genie is an amazing director. The members are fun and stimulating, and the instructors, Genie T and Helen, are great assets. We look forward to our classes and to the delicious lunches the center provides, and David is great, Mike S and Dale R. There are so many wonderful things that make the senior center great. We are blessed with amazing volunteers that give freely of themselves to better our lives with activities and meals, including Genie. We are very fortunate with how much Genie cares about us. It is unbelievable what she does to make our experience at the center truly worthwhile. Genie found out that I had trouble sleeping. Anytime after midnight, she posts a wealth of information about the upcoming day. Perhaps the most beneficial aspect of the center for me is inspiration. The following quote is by Elizabeth Hubler Ross. It is only when we truly know and understand that we have a limited time on earth, we will begin to live each day to the fullest as if it was the only one we had. Sylvia O. And for me, the center gives me a sense of purpose. I know this is where God planted me for this season in my life, and as long as I believe I'm making a difference, I will stay. Members become friends, and we can never have too many of them. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Councilmember Wood.
I'm just curious if they actually like you.
Sure.
Hey, I'm feeling that you're probably doing a pretty good job based off of what your your members are.
I am, and I can only do what the people behind me are that support me do, and I told Joe that would be gave me kudos on the internet. But a good leader is only as good as the people that back him up. So. Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments? No.
Can I say one thing?
Sure, Steph or Councilmember Kangizer.
Yeah, I just want to personally thank you for being there. I have stopped by many times over. I know you don't like this kind of recognition at all, but stopping by and just seeing your smiling face, no matter what time it is in the wee hours of the morning at seven thirty or in the afternoon. Um, I have cooked dinner with this woman with nine garlic pots and no oven um, all the way to where you're at right now, and you're doing a great job, and clearly that shows.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Genie.
You're welcome.
Genie's very humble, but she is, uh, she shows a lot of leadership for that senior center, and I think I speak for the rest of the council um, saying thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We have public comment, and we have one person so far. Gabriel, if you would like to stand up at the podium, state your name and you'd like to talk about.
Yeah, how do you fuck? Yeah, and after that, it's like mine is, mine seems silly. Uh, hello, everyone. My name is Gabriel Leon Royal. Um, new resident here at Yom, and we love it. Been here since April. Um, and my inquiry or thoughts, if you will, um, and uh, I apologize if it's been brought up in the past. I just, I did my online research and I couldn't find anything, but I was wondering if there had ever been any talk or thought of uh, zoning the city to be able to allow public um, use of golf carts. You know, I, I think this is a great opportunity. It would add charm. I know three or four guys just on my block that, you know, um, we play golf. We would love to just be able to drive from our home to the golf course and, you know, not uh, have it on um, uh, just have our own. Um, I, I love to take it to the senior center and learn the line dance and like that, but I think that, you know, with the way the city is, um, again, I'm new here, but one of the things that brought us here um, is the charm, and you know, uh, fifteen years ago, when we first came back out to Washington, um, you know, I, I know for a fact that this city has changed. Um, and uh, today was a great example of that change, and I'm, and I know that that's uh, on your radar, a lot about the traffic and congestion, uh, even on the weekends, especially on a beautiful weekend. Um, you know, it, it takes a while just to get down, you know, to Walmart on a Saturday because everyone's out, tops down, cruising, and there's just a lot of great fun things to do in the city, and it would be great to be able to uh, maybe utilize a golf cart, um, you know, to be able to go from, you know, uh, to home and terror, which is where we are, to, you know, masonry or ship lab or you know, go watch a movie and, and it might help with some of the congestion. I think it would add some charm and activity to prairie days, you know, a couple of years, have a golf cart show like you would a car show. I mean, there's a lot of fun things I think could be done. Um, it's also a, 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 a way to, um, grow some tourism in the future. I, you know, I've done a little bit of research, but um, because of the congestion, you know, there are places that you go, you park, you rent a golf cart, and you travel the town and things like that. So just wondering if that's ever been brought up, if that's something that might be, um, uh, you know, looked at in the future, uh, but I, I do think just like within this area alone, like it, it, it would be great for a lot of the residents, you know, to be able to, um, publicly use a golf cart, um, you know, with rules and things like that, and um, I know there are some cities that it's mandated, they have to have headlights and things like that, and so uh, that is my inquiry and thought, and thank you for hearing me out.
Sure. Uh, first of all, thank you, Gabriel, for attending and welcome to, to Yom. Um, hmm, we, we don't allow golf carts currently. Um, however, that is is something that a council could absolutely look into if that's something that, you know, they, they choose to do. Um, I would say that a more appropriate start would be um, reaching out to our public service director and kind of going over some of the possibilities. Um, but some requirements that would be, uh, would be needed to met, needed to be met, um, including like licensing, lights, stuff like that. Um.
I know some cities just like sidewalks, but again, I'm.
There's a couple of council members that I think want to chime in here. Um, Councilor Hess, go ahead.
Um, I think it was last year, we passed the ordinance as a council allowing, uh, wheeled, uh, wheeled A T Vs, and I'm just wondering what, if we could take a look and see what the differences are between that and a golf cart, and if there really is not much of a difference that we've already got, we've already got it in place.
You know, some cities, it's the only be mandated where it's only electric golf carts, so I don't know if that, you know, plays a different.
I think we'd have to bring in our police chief if we're gonna be chatting about like different licensing requirements, stuff like that. Um, were there a few other comments, Councilcrossman?
Bounce off Cody, because I think we have the same thought.
Yeah, so mentioning what Councilmember Hess said, I, I'll check and do it, but I believe golf carts fall under the wheeled alt terrain. They're required to have windshields, mirrors, turn signals, um, to be on the road, but I'll investigate with our chief to make sure that that qualifies. If not, then like the mayor said, we can bring a new ordinance that adds golf carts to that.
Where would I find it? Because I, I honestly, I looked everywhere online, and I couldn't find anything.
If you want to write your email address on here, um, we can have staff reach out to you.
Number, we'll reach out. Contact you.
And yeah, figure it out.
Slippery slope.
All right.
Looking at, use golf carts, right?
Yeah, just write down your, um, inform your email address, and Cody will have someone to here in the next few days. And uh, we'll see if, if that does qualify, or if we do need to, if council wants to go further, you can explore it and, uh.
I took a case of trans. So you're over here.
He's coming in here, Gabriel. We have time for that. All right. If you have something else, Councilmember Hess?
Well.
All right, moving on to, unless there's any other public comment. Moving on to consent agenda. We have the May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five city county, Yom City Council meeting minutes, and the June third, twenty twenty five Yom City Council study session minutes. Councilmember Hess.
I move that we, uh, approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, my Councilmember Kaminsky, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. We have resolution number six five nine updating the mayor and city council protocol manual. Kathy, would you, uh, start us off on this place?
What, I think, there? Um, I you reviewed this at the study session, um, last time, so the general government committee has been working on reviewing this very thoroughly since June. Um, a year ago, June, June of twenty twenty four. Um, so they've gone chapter by chapter, looked at the information, um, brought things current that were out of date, um, made suggested up, suggested updates. Um, it was handed out at the retreat, and then we did a highlight at the, um, study session. I don't know if anybody has any further questions or.
Let's start off with Councilmember Kangizer, if you don't mind, as chair of the general government committee, uh, if you wanted to add anything or discuss.
Um, really honestly, I would just be parroting Kathy, uh, being the chair of the general government committee, uh, yeah, just digging in and realizing that wow, we've been working on this for an entire year. June twenty twenty four is when we, um, really started peeling that apart. We, um, as a committee have been reviewing it, um, just mostly to make sure that it's coming up in, in all the verbiage, um, current government standards, rules, procedures, expectations for coming into this position as well. It was a huge help, um, before I even, um, was involved in council and just being able to see that. It is, I think you want to add that it is up on our agenda packet as well, and it is able to be seen online. Um, again, kind of sharing, shouting out our city of Yom. Uh, website is absolutely amazing and informative, so the, um, the track changes version and the clean updated version is what is available on the agenda online right now.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Hess. And then Crossman.
Us. Uh, in reference to, it's just a comment that I'd like to make about it is uh, having reviewed it, uh, the only, the only challenge that I kind of saw was in reference to we, that everything can be put on just to the website, and that's considered uh, sufficient notification to everybody about things. I just want to remind everybody to always consider that this is the minimum the requirements, but there's nothing that says we can't go beyond that, and hopefully at some point with Nisqually Valley News or some other news, uh, source, we could also include things in that as well. That, that's all I wanted to add.
Councilmember Crossman?
Move resolution six five nine.
Okay, second my Councilmember Johnston. Any further discussion? Councilfore Crossman?
Um, I'll just add that, uh, protocol manual for people my personality type, uh, who like to read and like order and stuff, uh, it really need to be done, so it's good to see that happen, and so you know, potentially reelection, this could be a whole new bunch faces up here. I think it'd be very helpful that this is getting cleaned up. Be in time for that, and then the, and new council members come in and help on a smoother transition reading through all this.
Any further discussion? All for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Councilmember, or Councilor Kathy, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, if you, I will have copies available for you, um, probably on Thursday. So if you want to either drop your book off, your protocol manual, or your handbook off, um, I can put those in there, or I will have them ready. You can just grab it and replace it, um, if you would like.
All right, thank you, Kathy. Moving on to item B, appointment to the planning commission. Um, this is to approve my appointment for Robert Bailey to the planning commission. Um, Robert Bailey is the gentleman over here who's in, in the audience. Um, one thing I I did speak out, first of all, to, um, a few different folks, including staff, um, as well as planning commission chair and, um, and Mr. Bailey himself. Um, one of the things that I appreciated about Mr. Billy was his, um, experience at, um, Wasdott. Um, he's got decades of it, and, um, he's very familiar with this town, has lived here for quite a while, and, um, has experienced a lot of our projects, including the Yom Loop. Um, with that, I'll open up to questions, comments. Councilor Wood.
Uh, curious what kind of, uh, what kind of work you did with Wasdott.
Sure, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Man.
Yeah. Uh, currently, I'm what's a design build site manager. I've been with, uh, the department, well, next Tuesday will be twenty seven years. Uh, I started off.
You start when you were twelve?
Uh, twenty two, actually. Yeah. Uh, you know, I started, uh, I went to Bates, actually, got a degree and, uh, started doing construction testing, inspection, you know, and as you move up the ladder, responsibilities get greater, so. Um, so right now I manage a, an office of thirteen individuals, consisting, they work from techs to seasoned engineers. Uh, I'm administering, uh, one of our design build projects for, uh, Washington State Department Fish Passage Project. It's a Gorsch project, hundred and thirty five million dollars, five fish passages to be done with over the next four or five years. Wow. Very good, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Council Richardson.
Sounds like you're overqualified. You know, I've been very happy with where I'm at, and I figured it's time to kind of expand, and I love where I live, so I might as well put some of that experience and effort into where I live and make it better.
Other questions, comments? I'll look for a motion. Councilwood?
Uh, I, I move that, uh, we approve Mayor DePinto's appointment of Robert Bailey to the planning commission.
Move to Councilor Kangizer. All right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? Motion carries. Congratulations, Commissioner Council. All right, moving on to item C, new business, uh, ordinance number one one three four, amendment to chapter two point six six of Yom's municipal code.
Oh, oh, excuse me, Gary.
Please.
Good evening, council. I'm Gary Cooper, planning and building manager. First, I want to say congratulations, Commissioner Bailey.
Thanks.
We'll be working together, and I have a lot of homework for you. And I'm sure you'll do a great job. So I'm here tonight to present, uh, present ordinance eleven thirty four. Uh, this ordinance would amend, uh, the chapter two six six of our municipal code. That chapter entirely covers annexations. Um, this proposal has been presented to the public services committee a couple of times and by the public services director at one of your work sessions um, within the last month, I believe. Um, basically, what this, uh, ordinance would do is a more or less a repeal and replace. So right now in our annexation code, it's about four or five pages. Um, we would basically be deleting the entire chapter and replacing it with a single sentence, which is that we would be adopting the um, state bar C W thirty five A fourteen and all the annexation procedures that it provides for. Right now, our code only provides for one procedure, and there are actually like eleven of them. And the one that we would like to use and will be presenting to you in the near future is not currently allowed by our code, so this would free us up and give us a lot more flexibility when we do annexations in the future.
Councilfore Crossman is the chair for the, um, public services committee. Did you want to add anything?
This makes life easier. So, you know, I like less regulation, I'm for it. So this, all whatever the state code is, why we have to make it more difficult, I do not know. So let's do it.
Any other questions, comments? Councilfore Hess?
Uh, move to approve ordinance one one three four, the amendment to chapter two point six six of Yom Municipal Code. Sorry, number, yeah, and, uh, adopting the annexation procedures contained in R C W three five A dot one four.
Okay.
Second, my Council Richardson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay? I'm curious. Thank you, Gary. All right, moving along to old business, there's some unscheduled. Moving along to number eight, standing council committee reports, starting with a public safety committee.
I have a new meeting.
Moving on to public services committee.
Yep, being back today, sky of a light agenda, not, nothing too major, except that the W R is online and interesting factoid is that it processes currently six hundred thousand gallons of material a day. I'll let your imaginations run, what kind of material that process is, but um, and hopefully I asked, prairie dust should be available by the end of the year roughly, if everything goes smoothly.
Whole lot of stuff.
A whole lot of stuff, every day.
Thank you, Councilfore Crossman. Moving on to finance committee.
No.
Moving on, general government committee?
Cancelled.
Moving on, emergency minister staff reports. Let's start with Cody from public services.
Yeah, um, so just.
Yeah, um, so just a couple of reports. Todd's currently at the conference, so I'm going to be getting a couple of updates. Um, we do look like we're gonna, it does look like we're gonna need about a million dollars for Marilyn Strickland's office and the federal government. Do continue Mozmin off of, uh, between second all the way down to where it's going to connect at Fourth Avenue. Uh, that's part of our couplets project. So as that money comes in, we'll keep you a bridge to what's going on with that, but it looks like we're going to get about a million for that, which is very awesome. Um, Trail Phase two B, um, they are going through permitting process right now. Construction should start at the end of this month. So you should see wrapping and other things happening on the end of the trail.
And what project is that? What's it gonna do again?
That's gonna extend our trail over the Nisqually River and into Pierce County. So, yeah, Council, you remember approved that at our last meeting, so exciting that it's moving forward. Um, we got to update a construction timeline on the Yelm Loop or bypass, quote unquote. Um, it will start, or the bids will go out in November. You'll start seeing construction trucks and everything moving around in January of the timeframe. And that construction will take place through April of two thousand and twenty-eight, when it'll be complete. So it's got a bunch of different breakdowns. If you want a full breakdown of what sections you're doing where, you can let me know and I can shoot that over to you. It's about a twenty-page document. So goes to bid in November. I started writing notes, uh, construction trucks, you'll start seeing construction stuff moving out in January, February timeframe of next year. So you'll see staging and then that'll, construction will take place through April of two thousand and twenty-eight. And it'll be complete in April of two thousand and twenty-eight.
There's a few different phases, different projects, uh, and the bridge, the roundabouts. We will be listing this, it will be similar to like the, um, dog park. We'll be listing out, we'll have major signs, um, that'll kind of explain different timelines. So folks can actually see what, what's going on.
Yeah. You can expect to see the construction, the areas will start as Walmart and Collins, where it currently is. That's kind of the areas will start. So see the construction happening there first. Um, Roundabout, um, as you know, state has guaranteed us the money for the Roundabout. That's the Bald Hills, five oh seven Roundabout and the Morris Road one. Right away acquisition is in progress, so we're working with property owners that round that area. We've already contacted them about acquiring right away for storm drainage and other things. So that's moving forward. We still expect a construction timeline and with a new loop timeline, our construction will probably be done shortly before, so construction should start mid next year. Um, and that should take place through twenty-seven and then it'll be complete near the end of twenty-seven. Um, as Councilmember Crossman said, W R F is online today. They turned the Liquid Stream on, started the process yesterday and actually turned the M B Rs, that membrane bioreactors on today. And it is a crazy awesome sight to see. So if you would like a tour of that, I'd be willing to do that. I'll probably have um, Kathy send out an email to you guys about possible tours over the next couple of weeks. If you want to see the new process, it is really cool to see, so.
How did construction start on that?
Oh, man, twenty twenty-two, construction started, early twenty-two. So it's been a long time coming. Some of the council members have come and gone and we've, since the project started, which is awesome and some are still here, which is great. The other thing you'll probably see if you've come down the bypass is crack sealing is underway. So they're doing crack sealing on Collins Road right now, on Deco's. Um, and they'll continue that, it's asphalt patch systems, we're working with them. Crack sealing is where they take those kind of alligator cracks and they fill them in to kind of preserve the road. After crack sealing, crack sealing will take place for the next about two to three months. Once that's done, then striping will take place because you don't want to stripe something and then crack seal over top of it. That makes no sense. Stripe will take place after that, about September timeframe, all that areas we talked about before, so.
Any questions? Alright, Councilor Hess?
I have a question in reference to the, yeah, it was the Roundabout. You said that, uh, we're working on the right away acquisitions at this time and we're hopefully Malcolm Wood complete by two thousand and twenty-seven, is that correct?
That's correct.
Other questions for Cody? Alright, Kathy, did you want to give a quick update on the LTAC?
Yes. Um, just so you guys know, we are changing the timeline for the LTAC Lodging Tax, um, applications. We've talked about this for quite some time. So currently, our applications go out in the spring, early spring. Um, applicants get their applications and the turnaround time to get those approved prior to um, events is very tight. And usually, events are already way in progress before they know if they're going to get that funding or not. So around us in the region, most people, they do the application process in the fall for the following year. So we've adopted a timeline, uh, we will be, the application process will begin in August of two thousand and twenty-five. Um, we'll collect applications for a month. So on September first, that will close. Uh, that will give us time to, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, time to review the applications in the month of September. They'll come before the council in October, um, and that will be approving funding for two thousand and twenty-six. So the fall of every year, they'll be applying. They'll get approved in the fall, which will be closer with budget cycle also for the following year. And so I've sent out an email to all of the people who have been awarded funding over the last three years. And I will send out another email to them in about a month. Just as a reminder to them, hey, don't forget, this timeline's going to come up, just so that they're prepared, um, to get those applications in.
Any questions for Kathy? Alright, we need to have one, one update from the courts. Um, Sonya's not here, she's also at the A W C Conference. We will be expanding services for our passport, um, division. And our first, what we're doing is we're having passport fairs quarterly now, or at least we're trying for, we're shooting for quarterly. Uh, we're just going to see how it goes on this Sunday, the twenty-ninth, from eight AM to four PM. Uh, we've already received a lot of phone calls and, um, from folks that are interested in this. And, um, we're hoping it's going to be, this is kind of modeled after Thurston County's passport fair they've done recently and earlier this year. Um, we've been working with them, trying to figure out, um, what works and what doesn't work. And so we're going to make this offering here and, uh, hopefully folks um, utilize it and we can keep going. If, if it is, if it's not, we'll reevaluate. Um, yeah.
What do you mean by a fair?
Passport fair, so.
Like balloons and rides?
Yeah, well, there will be elephants, rides, um, it'll be a grand, uh, event. No, these passport fairs, it's just more of a one day, a whole day from, um, like I said, from eight AM to four PM. You can come in throughout it and
To the little office over here?
Correct, the community center. So it'll be at the community center.
There'll be multiple people taking applications.
There'll be, we have multiple staff members that will be there to, uh, process these passports. Um, it'll be more it, it's recommended that you have a, um, time slot that you register for it. If you don't, uh, for one, stop by, I'm sure they'll be able to help you and, uh, figure out a time slot for you, um, will get you in, but
They have someone there taking photos?
We donate this first one, but we're going to, um, figure out if, if it is a need or a want from, from the, um, from the residents here, and we can expand on that. But it is something that we've had discussed. Um, it's just one more thing that we have to do, but, um, if people want it and it's more convenient, we are going to consider that and make it available. Councilor Hess?
Uh, can we remind everybody what the, uh, cost is to, for, that day, for them to, uh, take care of the passports for us?
Oh, do you know off the top of your head? I don't know off the top of my, but it, it is on the city website, though, if you go to, um,
It's only five dollars, sorry.
I think it's a little bit less than that, but it's more than that?
Apply for it?
When I, when I did my passport here in Yelm, um, like five years ago, it was, I want to say sixty-something, but maybe it's gone up a little.
It's, it's a hundred and ten dollars for your passport. And that has to be a check or money order because that goes with your application to Department of State. And then it's a thirty-five dollar processing fee that goes to the city of Yelm. That has to be paid separately.
So it's a hundred and forty-five dollars.
And those are set by the Department of State. The city of Yelm doesn't set those fees. They set those fees, so no matter where you go to get your passport, you're going to pay the same fee regardless of where you go.
It is on our website, though, for more details on it, as well as our social media. So if you look up, uh, City Yelm's Facebook page, it'll go ahead and, I think it was posted today even, um, some more of the details on there with cost included. Councilor Johnston?
If we did photos, is that something we would charge per person for?
Um, likely we'd incorporate into the cost, but we might be able to do it, uh, the, um, reduce cost. Council, Councilor Wood?
What did you say that was on?
It's this Sunday, the twenty-ninth.
Very good.
Eight AM to four PM, the, um, community center, Yelm Community Center. Any other questions on that? Councilor Kingizer?
So is this something that will, will you be able to get your passport during those passport fairs? Or are you still able to go to the Public Safety Building and?
Still do have it at, um, regularly over at the courts, um, but it, if you don't have it, it's meant to have, um, to expand access, basically, so we can get in more people. Uh, right now, we only offer about once a week on, on passports. So it gives another opportunity for folks, especially on the weekend versus, um, a weekday if you can't make it during the, during the day. Just expanded opportunities. I apologize, it's not at the community center, it's at the public's, Public Safety Building, right across the street. My apologies. Any other questions on that? Councilor Wood?
Uh, I'm curious about, uh, and I, and I think I just missed what you mentioned about the photos on those, but how, what's the process there?
You'll have to bring your own photos. Um, you can go to like the UPS store, they take photos. Um, here in Yelm, I think that might be the only one, the writing photo booth is Writing is closed.
They're very specific photos with a specific background and size, so you can't go to the booth, just take your own.
We are discussing if we can do that, um, in-house, that we will. Uh, but for the first, for this first one at least, we're not, we're just having a photo that, um, I've already gotten uh, from like, let's say UPS store and, um, bringing it into us. You don't get the actual physical passport at there, you do your application process, we'll mail it out to you.
Travel dot state dot gov and it will give you everything you need to know.
Everything you need to.
Everything you need to know, it'll give you all the, all the photo requirements.
Travel dot state dot gov? Check.
Moving on, um, I'll be attending the A W C Conference in Kennewick. I'll be leaving after this meeting. Um, it's always a good annual conference we have regarding different city stuff, um, different best practice from other cities, including, um, and usually local stuff. Um, I think there's a hand for tour, actually. Um, but other than that, should be looking forward to that and the hot weather over there. Uh, Prairie Days was well attended and, um, thank you for all that attended that and participated. We did have about one thousand raised for charity in the charity mush ball tournament. Uh, after our JBLM tour, we did get a recently update from Lieutenant Colonel White Wiseman, um, the Garrison Executive Officer, uh, regarding a Yelm gate. And it's been well received. He talked about with Colonel Park. And, um, they are going to be utilizing the, they currently utilize the Department of Army Security Guards and there is a shortage for some of those folks. And so they are making a priority, though, for a Yelm gate, which is great news for us. Um, unfortunately, they are still, um, looking to, to hire more of these, um, guards, security guards, um, part of the Army Security Guards. So, any updates on that? I'll let you know. And that's about all I got for me. Moving on, anything for me? Any questions? Moving on, Council reports, starting with Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I attended the Transportation Policy Board meeting. We, uh, discussed our, uh, high-capacity transportational regional vision, say, goals. And, uh, moving forward on that, and we also discussed the regional transportation, uh, uh, public comments and recommendations.
You, Councilor Wood, is that our Rubik's Cube?
It is a Rubik's Cube. Um, and our Councilman Richardson has the capacity to, to put it back to this point, so I recommend anybody watching that has one sitting on their shelf, track them down, you can put it back to look like this again without taking it apart.
Very impressive. Councilor Richardson?
Speaking of very impressive, I was very impressed with, uh, Genie's report today of the Senior Center. When you have an organization like that, that is just sharing such good news, that's usually a reflection of support from your community. Um, there's so much support coming from the city, so good on, on you, city staff and council member Kangizer, especially just for volunteering her time there. It is so good to see something like that thrive. And again, things don't thrive unless you have support from your community. So I just want to emphasize that again. Just hearing that report was very assuring. Because when you take care of your elders and your community and your seniors, seniors and that organization, it just speaks volumes about the type of place that you live in and the community that you reside in. Those things are important. So I just really enjoyed that presentation.
Thank you. Councilor Crossman?
Yeah, I thought the parade was great. Uh, it seemed to be more, more floats this year than usually is, so that's, that was good to see. Went to the planning department meeting last week, which, um, just so I could stay abreast of the comprehensive plan, as you know, we're just getting it all at one gulp, so it's easy to break it down. So, I don't know, go from there. Uh, we spent our afternoon in, having fun with that and yes, well, it happened. And I thought there was one other thing, but I can't.
Councilor, you guys are
I, um, well, I guess just a, a few updates, actually. I went to, I wanted to highlight after our four last meeting, we went to the Chamber Forum, several of us were there. And they had a presentation on counterfeit money, counterfeit dollars. And something that was just ringing in my mind is, um, thinking like how involved, like, I think we've taken a counterfeit dollar before and I didn't realize like, like that, like the police department needs to be called and how many different hands should be involved in that. And so I thought that was kind of just a neat presentation. I don't think we have so much trouble here in Yelm as we once did, but it's still out there. So something to be aware of. So kind of neat just how the chamber, um, and different entities have these different presentations. So it's kind of neat. Um, I went to SEFA, the Southeast Thurston Fire Authority Meeting. Um, they were getting ready to celebrate academy graduates from last meeting to now. Um, I don't remember the numbers, but they, um, have graduated their, their cadets. Um, they selected and voted on a new truck that has been in the budget and been in the works, um, for gosh, the year, year and a half that I've been a part of. It seems that it's brought up about every other meeting. So that was a really exciting thing, um, to see and be a part of. Um, they're continuing to brainstorm and have conversations about the, um, neighborhoods and houses that are beyond the Centralia Canal Bridges here in Yelm. Uh, and I got to take a little, um, I guess, just look, see, drive and kind of see exactly what we're talking about. It's kind of neat, again, seeing all of the little different pockets that Yelm has when you're just so used to just driving back and forth the main avenue and
I thought Centralia paid for that or they approved funding for that.
They did approve, they did approve the funding and, um, uh, trying to figure out kind of what to do and tell those adjustments can be made. Yeah, and so there's been, um, it's not my story, but it was just really interesting just hearing firefighters just kind of brainstorm and think about gallons of water and how to disperse that and how to get that over that bridge with, um, such a weight limit and things like that. So been, it's been really informative to be a part of that committee, so. Um, another big thing that I encourage you to go take a peek at is their Facebook page or their website. Um, and just the wildfire ready plan, um, is in place. They talked about that. Um, and it's kind of a continued work in progress, but it's, it's pretty buttoned up at the moment, so feeling confident about that. Um, and then the last thing, um, Prairie Days was mentioned, um, it all the way from it's really grown, all the way, um, from bingo on a Thursday night to the big concert in the park on Friday night, even though it was freezing, there was just, I mean, the park was packed, right? Um, the parade, mush ball, all of that. I honestly didn't get to go to any of it. Um, but I loved seeing all the buzz on social media. It was the talk of the town and the salon. Uh, it, it it's things like that that just, as, um, the gentleman said, bring charm to Yelm. Um, there's always cool stuff out there, uh, the dinners at the Senior Center, if you've never gone to volunteer for that, reach out. It is really neat to be a part of that. Dollars for Scholars, they awarded, um, their kids, I think since our last meeting, over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, Rosemont had their senior prom, another community event. That was really cool. I saw some of you, um, there and just a handful of other people. It was really cool. Um, so just keep being young.
Thank you. Councilor Hess?
I'd like to also add that Prairie Days was really good to see. It was fun to be on the bubble bus. And, uh, I think they all should be bubble buses, just because of the fun that they can bring, but, uh, it was a lot of fun. It was nice to see the cassette and, I guess, record, a vinyl record out there. Councilman Richardson, his, uh, live talk of what was going on, you'll be here. Uh, I also worked the booth for, uh, school, Schoolhouse Rock, uh, talking civics with people. It was a lot of fun. Uh, like, I mean, in all honesty, I'd like to see that happen again next year to be able, in particular, to get the youth more involved, to understand. And, uh, we already talked about some things that, you know, maybe next year, next five years, we can bring to the, uh, Prairie Days. Uh, the Senior Center was really great to hear all that's there. And I want to thank fellow council members of approving the change in the budget this past year of getting it so that we covered their annual costs that are mandatory so that they can use their, uh, other funds for activities and such. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, for intercity transit, duh, 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 duh. Um, a lot, a lot been going on with that. Uh, we are getting the budgets, uh, taken care of. Um, a lot of, lot's been going on with that. Uh, we are getting the budgets uh taken care of. There is uh coming up in the future. There will be pub, they're looking for public comments on the uh service change summary and draft uh analysis. It's for the transit development plan from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-thirty. If you go to InterCity Transit's website, you'll be able to see a briefing on that and be prepared to do, uh, they're wanting to bring in September twenty-twenty-five to have people communicate and have, or I should say July is when they want to open up for public in September twenty-twenty-five. Uh, we're looking at enhanced commuter service to Pierce County, basically taking us to the uh sound transit the sounder uh area there for uh people that need to get into Seattle as well as getting new ac- access to the Matigan Gate at JBLM, be able to transfer over from uh, intercity transit to the Pierce County bus, to be able to get on base for those that need to do that. Uh, and uh, next thing that they're also looking for is public comment for uh, some more of the activities that they're looking at bringing in, uh, they're they're filling in posts and what they're looking at for expanding the, expanding their services. So I recommend anybody who is interested, please go to InterCity Transit, take a look at what they have there and be prepared to make comments if you would like. Uh, also, if anybody has any comments or concerns that they want to bring up, please email me and I will definitely bring it up at the next InterCity Transit Authority meeting or to the appropriate person. And to also answer a question that has come up, uh, the executive director is working on finding out how much is collected from Yelm or the tax and then what it pays out cost-wise for bus ninety-four. So hopefully we'll get that soon.
Counselor, Counselor Johnson.
Uh, like Councilmember Crossman said, I also attended the planning commission meeting. Um, aside from that, no other or uh committees or meetings.
Alright, Counselor Kaminski.
I attended the Arts Commission meeting and we had a grueling session going through the fifty-two pieces of local art that was submitted for our utility rep project. So Heidi will be coming to the council for the approval to move forward, not for the approval of the art. Same. Tongue-in-cheek, but no, it's very, very nice artwork.
Counselor Crossman?
She's done, sorry.
Oh.
The, oh.
Well, I haven't.
No, yeah.
Okay.
My question, sorry.
One more thing, um, I did have the privilege of going for my second annual float trip down the Nusqually. And for the second year in a row, we were rained out. It was really fun. Um, but it was just a really great experience. If if anybody's interested, it only happens once a year. The water was a little low this year, so we had to pull out of our rafts, get off on the rocks and push the boat back into the water. So it was shallow. And this year, there was an extra layer of fun because Hannahford McLeod and his family was on one of the boats. And of course, being the master storyteller that he is, he had to stand in the canyon and give us the whole history of his ancestors. You know, he, he's just great at storytelling. And then when we were floating, he sang a little song on the river and it was just exquisite. That's all I have to report.
Very, yes. Counselor Crossman?
Yeah, I remember, I did write them. Uh, basically, it's a, a thank you to you, Mr. Mayor, and some other folks, I was uh for in regards to the state budgeting and doing all the lobbying work to get the stuff funded. Because I was hanging out with our state rep last week and he was saying how Roy got few projects in the budget approved, but they got kicked out six years until thirty-one, so they won't see those projects come through. I was like, cool. I'm glad, so that, but that made me think, oh yeah, we've had a lot of people I know lobbying for Yelm, so uh, so thank you for the work you've done on that, as well as everybody else that pushed for these projects that we desperately need to get through and sorry for Roy.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Yelm Loop especially was one of the more difficult ones and it was something that was up considering it's gonna be moved out further. Um, Andrew Barkis is, the state representative Andrew Barkis has been uh critical for making sure that stayed in the budget. Um, but yeah, thank you. Alright, any else for the good order? There is no um executive session scheduled, taking a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second, like Counselor Johnson, just a little quicker on the draw. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay? We are adjourned.